I'm going to call the meeting to order. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, regarding announcements, we are here in person tonight. We are also on Zoom. So that quick mention about Zoom, we understand that there may be some first time attendees on Zoom tonight and would like to review the standard school board meeting process. At the start, members from the public may comment on agenda items only. School board will move through the regular work session meeting. Then at the end, when prompted, there is also time for public comment. Meeting is being videotaped and individuals attending this meeting virtually and intending to speak should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of PA Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the name of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. So to assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board raise their hand electronically and when prompted, state your name and complete address. Please spell your last name. Members of the audience are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. And to allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, board president may ask an individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. Also, we had an exec session regarding personnel before this work session tonight. And is our student rep, Ishika, on the Zoom?
I'm on Zoom.
Okay. Do you have any announcements for us tonight, Ishika?
There are no announcements this evening.
Okay, thank you. And do we have any public to be heard on agenda items only?
There are no hands raised at this time.
Okay. Moving on then, Board and Committee. What's that? Give it a second. Rich, are there any hands raised? No? Okay, thank you. Boarding Committee reports. Curriculum and Technology, Linda?
So curriculum met last week. Summer resources and required assignments were presented by Dr. Murray. There's information on the website pertaining to summer resources for all students, K through 12. We discussed federal programs. Katie Gardi provided an update regarding recent Title I, II, and IV allocations. Let's see. Dr. Murray recommended that Curriculum and Committee bring the TLS Modernized Learning Contract to the full Board for approval. Let's see. Instructional coaching was discussed and Heidi Rockland shared the results of instructional coaching and an impact survey. There was fall planning subcommittees and they reported their progress. There were three committees chaired by Robert Hunter. The first one chaired by Robert Hunter and Chief Boyer, the second by Kelly Murray, and the third by Heidi Rockland. They each shared the progress of their respective fall plans. The first one is going back to school. The second one is an all online plan and the third is a hybrid plan. And if you want to see those presentations, you can watch the committee meeting. They are going to come back to us with a much more detailed plan at the next meeting. Then Technology met. Mr. Catalano requested that we approve no more than $2,000 to complete the tech refresh for the upcoming school year. Funding will come from the cap reserve and be repaid from the tech operating budget. Student devices have been received and plan to deploy is currently being developed. We're waiting on cases and the hope for a July deployment of all the Chromebooks. Mr. Catalano also stated that a lot of the tech we're letting stay with the students over the summer, if it's needed. And that was it. Are there any questions?
What is a proposed timeline for finalization of the three options or, in my opinion, two options? What are we looking at realistically? Since we're in mid-June, we're looking to start school in August, I hope. And in order for parents to make some decisions, what are we looking at realistically for this information to be issued or presented?
Yeah. Well, we have to have three plans, a red plan, a yellow plan, and a green plan approved by the school board prior to students returning to school. What we would need to do, and our plan was originally to have those completed by mid-July. We're going to do the best we can to get them ready for next week, although we will know way and know how be ready for you to approve them next week because I think the variables are going to change between now and the beginning of school year. So, you know, we have some, you know, we have some decisions to make. No matter what we do, we'll have to communicate these plans out, you know, what we're doing. My guess is if I was a betting man, I'd say we're going to be in green. And so whatever plan that we approve will be the green plan that we're looking at. But you folks will have those completed plans certainly by mid-July and they should look very much like what we present next Monday with tweaking going on. So in answer to your question, when can we approve them?
I just want to get clarification, Dr. Gooden. The board will have to formally approve the plan. Do you have a target date as to when you would have them take action on the plan? Just?
That was, that's my question.
Is it the July?
That is the question.
Okay, I didn't.
I mean, we have a work session.
So you would call a special meeting in July, then, I presume?
Yes, that was a discussion during the Curriculum and Technology meeting that we would, in fact, call a special board meeting in July, likely the third week in July, I think, is what we discussed, just to give adequate time from the presentation that they did the other night to the presentation to the whole board next week. And then also be able to put another layer on based on what comes out of the governor's office or the CDC to make sure that we are doing the best we can to.
We need to set proper expectations, okay? So what was discussed at Curriculum is next week is for the presentations to be, just to give an update to the board on what we saw at Curriculum plus whatever they're at at that point in time. There's no finalization of plans. There's not going to be anything completed by next week. It's impossible. The goal is, as I remember, and Linda, correct me if I'm wrong, but the goal was by July curriculum meeting, we would have a closer to finalized draft plan that would then be presented to the board by the third week, all in his right, the third week of July, so that we would go into approval so that we could be in a position of start being able to implement come August. But everything's going to be contingent on whatever happens between now and next week and the week after that and the week after that and so on and so on. So these committees are working very diligently to try to cover all the bases. But until we start to get more firm positions from the state, some of these things are going to be best case scenarios of what they could ascertain from information that's being put out there. So, but next week is just to provide an overview of the three groups and where they are at that point in time. So I just want to make sure we set the proper expectations because we're not going to come in here next week and have completed plans or close to completed plans. And there's a third piece of this that wasn't brought up, that there's going to be money that's going to be necessary to be spent depending on what these plans are. And these are all going to be unbudgeted line items. So that's going to add a whole other dynamic to what's going to happen between now and July and the start of the school year.
So that's all correct. Just want to clear up, though, there won't be a curriculum meeting in July. There will just be a school board meeting around the third week. Good.
But I'll make sure that the board gets this information just as soon as we can wrap it up. As soon as we can get it cleaned up, close enough for you folks to look at, we'll get it to you and so that we're ready to consider it at our July meeting.
Yeah, that was my other question. What are we thinking? I know we had the meeting last week. But I guess from a structural strategic standpoint, we don't know where we're going to be come August. So is the approach, is there an approach for each stage, just in case where we're at, we're going to be at?
Yes, we have to develop actually three plans. You know, a red plan, which basically is schools are closed. And so that would be one. And the other would be our yellow plan, which is a plan that has a degree of loosening but still a lot of restrictions. And then your green plan, which has a lot of language like, you may do this, you could do this, things like that. So we're trying to cover our variables.
I think the term was to the extent feasible.
To the extent feasible, yes.
And that clarification, if it's red, it's not that schools are closed, it's our brick and mortar. Buildings are closed. We will still have school.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Gooden. Linda?
All right, any other questions or comments for Linda? Okay. Moving on to the policy meeting, we had a brief policy meeting just prior to the curriculum meeting on that same night, on June 9th. We accepted the minute, we approved the minutes, and then we were talking about Policy 816. We discussed minor revisions to this policy regarding the use of audio and video monitoring equipment. It is brought forward for a first reading tonight. We also discussed and supported rescinding Policy 810, which was video monitors specifically on busing. Is that right, if I recall, Mr. Rizzo?
Correct, that's Policy 810.1 that deals specifically with videotapes on buses, yes.
But the 816 covers all school grounds, transportation, all of that. So again, we're working to define our policies and eliminate ones that are not needed. Then we moved on to our new business and discussed the schedule for reviewing the oldest policies that we have in place from 1991 to 2000. We have discussed a few different options for looking at those, potentially 15 per month throughout the 2020-2021 school year. But we did have a discussion regarding whether to bring all 119 policies forward at one time or at an approximate pace of those 15 per month. Mr. Rizzo will review that list and share policies via Google Drive docs for the committee members. And we will review those and comment throughout the summer as he finishes those so that we're going to try to expedite the process. Because one of the committee's concerns was that we only meet for approximately one hour a month. How are we going to look at potentially 15 policies? It's not going to happen. So we're going to work a different way, more constructively. We're going to be reviewing and working together through the Google Docs. And when we get to the meeting, that will actually be a recap and a lot of the work will have already taken place. There are, so as I said also, Policy 816 is on for a first reading tonight and 810.1 will be rescinded at the August board meeting. And we will not meet again until, I believe, September with that. And the other piece was that the Community Relations Committee meeting did not meet. There was a lack of school board quorum. Myself was included in that as I had a family emergency and could not be there. The next meeting will be held October 6th. But I'd like to extend my sincere thanks to the Communications, Marketing, and Media Department for Erin and Andrew and all of their help for everything that they did. Their thorough and extensive work to remain in regular contact with our community during that mandated shutdown as well as their work to make the 2020 graduation a memorable experience for our seniors and for their families. The feedback on social media has been overwhelmingly positive, what Springford has done, and really kudos to, many, many thanks to Erin, to Andrew, and to all of their team members for making that happen. So thank you for that. And the next committee report would be, or board report would be from our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Rizzo.
Can we ask questions?
Oh, yeah. Does anyone have any questions? Sorry. On policy, questions, comments?
So if we're trying to accomplish all this with policy, why aren't we meeting, why aren't you meeting in August?
Typically don't meet in August.
Well, that's.
We don't. So what we're doing, though, is the Google Docs. And if it gets to a point where Mr. Rizzo gets through several of those.
Why are we concerned with how much work is being done in Google Docs that is outside of committee meetings that I question at Mr. Fitzgerald?
Well, first I'm hearing about Google Docs, but yes, I mean, if we have a committee that is supposed to function in person to deliberate over policy, I would prefer it be done in person than leaving a paper trail of Google Docs.
Right. And if there was purpose, if there was purposes in the past to have meetings in August, we did. So if we're trying to accomplish all this with policies, I'm just throwing it out as a recommendation, but I wanted to bring that up with Google Docs because I know that was not a road that you want to go down.
Okay, we can stay away from that. I think that our goal was really to try to expedite the review process, but maybe we're putting the cart before the horse a little bit with that. We could go ahead then and meet in August if the committee would be available to do that, which would give us.
I don't see any reason not to meet.
One additional hour.
But the whole idea of the Google Docs was not to circumvent any policy. It was so that we can all look at these policies at our leisure, make our comments on it. So then all these comments are in the document. So then we have a committee meeting. We're not sitting there individually rehashing all the minutia. So it's all there, we can look at it and say, yeah, we like this, we don't like it, and we're done with that policy. So I don't really see how that's dancing around it. I mean, it's all going to be public information. It's just that we're trying to get to, you know, 15 a month.
My concern is you're deliberating through an online tool.
I'm sorry?
That's supposed to be, you're communicating through an online tool that's supposed to be used.
Yeah, I mean, in isolation, if you, you know, if you, Ms. Earl, are bringing your suggested changes to, say, Mr. Rizzo, and somebody's doing it separately, and somebody's doing it separately, but the Google Doc is, my understanding of it, is it's open to collaboration. So like, I could send it to a group and then say, oh, you know what? I'd rather, we have this clause in this. So I mean, I think it's well intentioned, don't get me wrong. Maybe the Google Doc function is a way we can do it where we can still have you give input, but not in a way that is.
Interactive.
As interactive, I think is the best.
Well, possibly, we could all just review it and take our own notes and then share them at the meeting.
But we'll need that extra hour in August and any other time that we can get. So we'll need to have that committee meeting in August. Okay, is that agreeable? Okay, thank you. All right, any other comments, questions? Okay, Mr. Rizzo?
Excuse me, thank you. Good evening, directors, students, staff, and community members. At this board meeting one year ago, Dr. Roche delivered his farewell address. At that time, my knowledge of the district was limited to what I could read and watch online. One year later, information that was available online pales by comparison to what is actually happening here at Springford. This past year, I have worked with a dedicated school board with a vision to constantly improve and a focus on improving the student experience. I have worked with a top-notch administrative team filled with the experts in their field and well-respected by their peers. I've witnessed dedication and sacrifice from our teaching and support ranks, and finally, our students. Striking a balance between hard work and playing hard, our students continue to excel in the areas of athletics, academics, and the arts. This year certainly brought us a set of challenges. Regardless of what obstacle we faced, through teamwork and careful planning, we overcame. When the COVID-19 closure came, we successfully switched our programs to an online format with no face-to-face training. We provided personalized instruction and technical support daily with an average daily attendance rate of 98.45%. We regularly shared best practices and continued to work towards improving our virtual environment. When families lacked devices or connectivity, we answered. We gave out upwards of 1,000 devices and provided hotspots to families in need. When students and staff started feeling a loss due to the quarantine, we answered. Our staff provided opportunities for our students to feel connected and special, even though we couldn't break the social distancing guidelines. And finally, when our graduating seniors felt robbed of meaningful culminating experiences, we answered. With activities ranging from personalized graduation walks to supporting a parent-organized senior parade, Springford stepped up to do what was right to the extent possible while following current government guidelines. None of the aforementioned items would have been possible without top-down support. So we thank you, Dr. Gooden and the Board of School Directors for continuing to support this amazing district. As a former educator, Assistant Superintendent, community member, and father of four, I beam with pride when I think of the work that so many have done on behalf of our school community. We still have some obstacles to overcome. As Dr. Gooden has mentioned on several occasions, planning for the return of our students in the fall is like hitting a moving target. With so many unknowns, our planning committees are working diligently to account for as many variables as possible while we work toward another high-quality plan to get our students back on track and in our schools. We are Springford Pride. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rizzo. Any comments or questions for Mr. Rizzo? Okay. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Just super briefly, it's not often that there's a seminal Supreme Court case that comes out today. The Supreme Court brought forward changes to Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, which expanded protections for employees for sexual orientation and transgender status. Frankly, as an employment lawyer, it did come as a surprise from this court. That will modify your policies. It will change some of the language within policies as a result and may indicate where the court would be for other areas like the Office for Civil Rights for student-related purposes. So definitely an interesting decision. Have to dig into the decision ultimately, but wanted to notify you of what occurred today.
Okay. Any comments or questions for Mr. Fitzgerald? Okay. Then moving on, the minutes, A and B. Any questions or comments? Personnel, A through I. Questions or comments?
Question about G and H. So with G, Mr. Fitzgerald, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have contractual language, Mr. Fitzgerald? Oh, I'm sorry. We have contractual language in the professional contract agreement. Are we allowed to add the language that's in the part, the ending of G into that?
The short answer is I would put that in now as a prophylactic to how you would interpret a collective bargaining agreement when we might not be able to hold the actual events or positions. So yes, I would place that in there. How a contract would be interpreted when we can't physically hold it or we have limitations may be up to somebody down the road who would decide it. But this would be protective language, at least at this stage, under the circumstances.
For the current or for a future contract?
A, under the current, the current contract does not speak to it, but this is language that gives us, at least in how we're authorizing it, some flexibility.
So if the events of this year were to repeat themselves next year?
Yes.
And that Act 13, I believe, this would negate that, correct?
You, right. Act 13 expires in about three weeks.
Right, but if they were to bring that back.
So you could have a scenario for next year where we can't hold hypothetically varsity football. And the question becomes is, are we obligated to pay stipends under a collective bargaining agreement for that or not? This language at least provides some prophylactic or protective language for us as to how we're authorizing it. Now, could the SFEA or an individual who feels like they should get their stipend challenge it? They could, and the contract, as I think as Mr. DeBella well knows, does not speak to this particular issue. So that's why this language is put in at least on the front end, and we'll see how this plays out. Let's hope we have football. Let's hope we have all our extracurriculars, but this is just in case.
But I mean, the reason I bring it up is that we, and I'm not sure if the public knows or not knows or whatever, but we ended up paying our spring extracurricular contracts, even though a majority of the activities weren't held. And I'm concerned that although we did that once, I'm concerned that, you know, putting out 200-plus thousand dollars or more because fall sports, I believe, runs higher than spring sports, I'm concerned that we could be in a situation where we're going to put out that money again.
Well, you certainly won't be statutorily. I mean, I think we can all.
We don't know that.
I understood. I do think that Act 13 might not be, will not be repeating itself, certainly in its current form. Now, whether you are obligate, you do need to appoint people to positions in case they are going to run in the fall. That you have to do to be prepared accordingly. This language places some conditions on to whether that's going to trigger or not. And then we will see how the association responds accordingly, if they believe they're entitled to it or not. But they can't, then they won't have Act 13 to rely on.
Well, and we're talking about Act 13. A majority of people don't have any idea what Act 13 is. So if you want to explain what Act 13 is.
By all means. On March 20th of this past year, the state legislature voted, I think it was 98-0. Senate was, I think, 50-0. And then the governor passed soon thereafter essentially a bridge program for all public school entities, VOTECs, IU's, to continue compensation as if a pandemic had not occurred. The language, as this board knows, was very broad as it indicated. An individual should be paid no more or less than they would have been entitled to had the pandemic not occurred. What that act didn't do was specify if we were just talking about their primary employment with a school entity or not. And as a result, many people, as we know, have stipends as the football coach, are a professional employee during the day and do other things. They never, PDE never clarified it. The state legislature, the school code was never clarified. And as a result, Springford, like I think all 500 school districts in the Commonwealth, realized based on the plain language of the statute, even the stipends for extracurriculars had to be paid out in the spring under Act 13.
Well, the reason I bring it up is because there's a lot of questions out in the community perspective that say if schools were closed since March, then we would be realizing all these savings because people weren't being paid. And that's obviously not the case. So I just want to make sure that the community understands that, you know, agree or not agree, it doesn't matter, from a board perspective, we were required by the state to continue to pay out these positions. And then on H, I'm not really sure why we're authorizing the employee personnel if we pass the budget where there is no new hires.
There are no new hires. It's replacing, you do have to hire replacements for your retired people. And you can see that on the agenda, that we have a list of folks that C 1 through 7. Those are teachers who are replacing retirees. So we're still in the process of filling those positions, backfilling those positions. But if you're going to have a board meeting in July, we're having a board meeting.
We've done this previous years, but this year I can't support H because, again, I don't know what the next several weeks or months is going to look like. And I think every position moving forward needs to be highly scrutinized, even though that somebody's retirees came in after what was discussed during the budget process.
That would make sense, of course, because we're also going to be available in July. So why would, we should be able to help with that.
I also want to make sure that we're talking about July 20th. Am I correct?
Dr. Gooden, how does that limit us with getting potentially the best candidates that we can for that job? Because, you know, we're competing with other districts for these hires.
Well, the reason that H has been in there in the past is because we typically did not do a board meeting in July. We just didn't. And so we needed to fill those positions through the summer and that you would see all those positions show up on your August agenda. But if we're going to have a board meeting in July with the board's indulgence, we can, if any appointments we need to make between, you know, between now and August, we can pick up in July.
I think the dynamics that.
I don't see a problem with it. I'm sorry, go ahead.
The overall dynamics that we're dealing with as a district, I see us meeting in July, I see us meeting in August, and probably several times before school starts. in July, I see us meeting in August, and probably several times before school starts.
All right, finance, A through J. Questions or comments?
D, and that's, it's D, one through 33, 35. I have a concern with issuing contracts or agreeing to contracts right now. These contracts are based on their certain scope of services, as if we were functioning as a brick and mortar school. I would caution the board to maybe we look at these contracts near the end of August or mid-August. By that point in time, we should have a better understanding of where we are. Some of these contracts, proposed contracts are relatively large. Like item 13 is a three-year contract that's over $3 million. And I would just open discussion with the board that we push these contracts, not that we're changing them, but I am concerned with the values, and they're based on a certain scope of services or scope of work. And we don't know where we're going to be come August.
So would the board like me to filter these and go through and, and bring back to you next week the ones that are going to be happening this summer that we would need, and then the ones that we can hold off?
What is, yeah. And I, I think when you look at, now, Mark, that's something that we're required by law to do no matter what, right? The number three? Number D3?
No, Mark.
Yeah.
That's, that's so, I mean, there's, there's a filter, there's a filter on there where there's things that were required to do that doesn't matter how we're holding school. And then there's other ones that we may need to take a closer look at, depending on what happens. So I think filtering or sorting or however you want to call it would be a great idea.
All right, I'll have that ready for next week then, and we'll filter through the ones that we can hold on and the ones that we can get, we need to have approved right now.
Yes, that's fine, Dr. Gooden. I didn't want to go through one by one, so I lumped them all together. But that's, that's fair.
Any other questions or comments on those? Okay, property, A. Programming and curriculum, A through C. Any questions or comments? Okay, other business, A through C. Questions or comments? Board comment?
I'm not sure I can go back on this, Madam President, but I would take it from a different perspective. Anything regarding confidential agreements, we've talked about this in the past, and there was discussion that there would be some blurb or information because I, I find it hard to support something that I don't know.
I believe in the past, what you're referring to is we had asked for just basic information as to why they were taking place. Real basic. Do you recall that, Mark?
I'm, I think I'm at a loss of what we're, what we're talking about.
I believe Mr. Jackson is talking about confidential settlement agreements.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
And, and, yeah. And I'll, I'll take that one on me. I, I know, I know there's one on there that's kind of large, but it's, it's more of an extension of a current settlement agreement. Well, I can put that, I'll make sure I get that to you guys.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of Mr. Jackson's question, I mean, if there is a question that any board member has about how we got there, that we're not, this A isn't the form to do it, but B, that they, they would be entitled to it under the auspices of legal.
Yep.
And I have to agree with, you know, Mr. Jackson again, that what we requested as a board, that when we're going to have some of these, when these things are going to be on the agenda, and I understand, Dr. Gooden, I can appreciate that, it falls on you as one, and that's fine. But just moving forward, the agreement was that we would have a quick exec session, and you'd, and we would be presented the highlights of what that agreement was related to or something. And that, it wasn't to discuss it, and it was just to have highlights because we're voting on something that we, so that's, so we do have time between now and the next meeting when we're voting on it, if we so choose to have a quick.
And candidly, it's my obligation to make sure that you have context to know what you are going to be entering into.
Right. Thank you.
With that being said, we should have an exec session next week before the meeting, just to have an update. I think, are there two of those today, right?
Yeah, there's two of those on there, but we also need an exec session for safety and security next week, too. Because we're required under Act 26 to do that at the end of the school year, so.
I also had a question or comment about the, the sports, about, and maybe Dr. Gooden's the one to answer this, but before we can go back to having our students do sports, we have a deadline, I believe, that there's some board awareness that needs to be made or something for that. Could you provide some clarification on that?
You're absolutely right. Mick is, Mr. McDaniel should have that ready for me for Wednesday, and it'll be in your hands by Friday, that we do have to present a plan for, for sports and get it approved by the board.
And that's been, that's the PIAA has made that request of us in, within the community awareness of what sports potentially would look like when we start practices up again prior to the start of the school year?
Yes.
That's what we're looking at?
Yep.
Okay.
Correct.
And we were talking about this, right? And maybe, Mr. Fitzgerald, we're, we're not really sure what approved by the board means, if it's actually an actual vote, or approved means we saw it and we're good. I mean, what's, what's the end result on that?
It's, it's interesting because I, I think there's a little history there. If you recall when, when districts had to put their continuity of education plan in place back in like April, it was vague as to who was supposed to approve it. So a lot of superintendents just submitted it, and the, and many boards had no idea what was being submitted. And then, of course, you guys will get emails from parents saying, this is the plan. So I think PD heard that loud and clear. And with regard to this reintegration program, they've made it clear, you have to approve it. So I interpret it to mean that there needs to be five votes to support whatever you're going to do.
We're saying, we wonder if it actually means an official vote or, because it wasn't really, like, most things at PDE, it's not, you know, exactly.
It's, it's rare for PD to be clear, but I thought they were clear on that one, so.
Well, okay. Well, you know.
I, I just think anything that has, has been stated that the board has approved it, we actually should vote on, just.
Dr. Gooden, I have a question. Is there a possibility we can open up the tennis courts and/or the track at some point?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, you've made me very happy. I know. What does that mean? That's like, that's like approved, and if possible, you're just, fire. I didn't like that.
As Clinton would say, pure as mud.
I'll, I'll tell you, we've communicated out to the community, to those folks who have questioned this. We've told them by the end of June, we'll have everything opened up for them.
Thank you. That will make my children very happy.
Any other board comment? I think the only thing I want to say is that I, I hope everyone got to see the wonderful tribute that was written to Dr. Nugent online. And I don't have words that can describe or come close to that, or even what I've seen during my time here, not only as a board member, but as a parent. And he has some, he's, he's an amazing person. He's done an amazing job. And it will be a loss for us. He truly has a legacy here. And just, just wonderful, all-around person, contributor, leader, just the, the list is endless. And I'm sure many of you will echo those thoughts.
I think he will be really greatly missed.
I would encourage you to submit videos. I think something's being put together. I think we all saw that, right? So if there's any messages you'd like to capture that way. I, I have a unique perspective with Dr. Nugent in that I knew him first as a very young teacher, then as a football coach and a wrestling coach, and he was a mentor to me. And then sort of, growing up in this community, I'm, I mean, I'm personally upset that he's leaving us. I'm happy for him because we all deserve that opportunity to retire. You know, it's, I'm heartbroken because he was such a, a great contributor, a great attitude, a good role model. And, you know, I mean, saying thank you isn't enough. It's going to be a mourning period for me because being a high school principal is an extremely hard position, and he's done it wonderfully. So I'm going to miss him terribly, and I know all of us feel the same way. Thank you for bringing it up.
The deadline for the videos, by the way, are July 24th, if anyone was wondering.
I have a bunch of comments, but I'll wait for, until we actually make the vote next week because maybe we won't let him retire. We didn't get past that vote yet, you know? And it would, it'd be nice if Dr. Nugent might be able to attend next week if, if he's willing to. He doesn't have to, but if he's willing to.
Well, I, he won't want to. I'm fairly confident, but I believe he will if we ask him. Well, if he's watching, if he's watching this, we've already blown our cover, but I think he'll be, I think he'd be happy to be here.
And the report can be on whatever subject matter you choose. All right, any other board comment at all? Okay. Public to be heard. Okay, are there, are there any hands raised at all?
There's no hands raised in the Zoom room currently. Oh, wait, hold on, we've got one. Here we go. Heidi Goldsmith, your mic is live. Please give us your name and address, and then your comment. Thank you.
Hi, I made a mistake last week, so I'll make sure to get my address first. This time, it's Heidi Goldsmith, 220 Von Steuben Drive, Collegeville, PA. I just wanted to make one comment. In, in all candor, I was not planning to make any comment. I was actually just interested to what the board session was this evening. However, and I will be completely truthful, the Zoom meeting is, I'm incapable of telling who's talking. So I can just say that the board member who was speaking about the sections D and, and the costs regarding those, I would welcome an opportunity to sit down and talk to you about kids with disabilities because that's what it actually entails. And the reality of the situation is districts, regardless of whether or not COVID exists, in my opinion, haven't, were obligated to provide free, appropriate public education to kids with disabilities. And that's what that session covers. And not providing those services is a complete risk to them, as well as their longstanding education within Springford, and bluntly, potential lawsuits that could exist because of that. So I understand that that is a large budget item, but I think understanding and appreciating the families, and I am not one of them, truthfully, that are operating under Section D is really important because it may seem like a large budget item, but for those kids, those are necessary services. And I would truly appreciate an understanding and looking into that beyond just a pure number figure. Thank you.
Heidi, hi, this is Clint Jackson. I, I think you misunderstood my statement, so I'll clarify that. It was nothing to do with the services. The services, I was not making reference to services changing. The services would remain the same. My comment was based on the contract itself and the value of the contract, not the services. And if you would like to talk to me, I have a public email address and also a public phone number on the website.
Well, and Mr. Jackson, to add to that, some of the items covered under item D are not specific to special education, but there are areas such as Rothman, or I'm sorry, reconstructive orthopedic associates to, to support our, our student athletes during the season. So those types of items, if we're not going to have a season, then maybe we want to hold off in approving those types of, of independent contracts. So those independent contracts are not specific just to IEPs or, or special education students. They are, they are a very broad range. We have friendship hook and ladder, again, not specific to our IEPs or special needs students. So, you know, I think that the ask was, could you please sort these so that we can focus on those that we know that we need, such as those that would cover an IEP or an ESY plan for our students, so that we have that. And then the others, we would hold off until our July meeting. So I hope, to the caller, I hope that that clarifies for you.
And, and that was my understanding of the task for me as well, that I need to filter and, and filter out the ones that we can hold off a little bit on approving, and which ones need to be approved now.
Correct.
All right, thank you. Are there any other hands raised? No.
There are no more hands raised in the Zoom room currently.
Thank you for the Zoom room update. Can we have your, yes, please?
How many people are shown to be on the call?
There's 44 attendees currently.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Dennis Wright. I live at nine, Annette Drive, Limerick, Pennsylvania, which is at the top of the hill from where the VOTEC is. First of all, I'd like to thank the school board for all the hard work that you do. And I know this year has probably been the biggest challenge that you've ever had in what you do. I moved into Limerick in 1996. There was no Evans Elementary School back then. I have two kids that have graduated from Springford High School, a daughter 28 years old, and a son 25 years old. So I understand the value of the education here. Had the opportunity to listen to your May 18th meeting, watched it last evening, started at about midnight, got done a little bit after 2:00 in the morning. Entertaining, but I'm sure it was painful for you folks. My concern is not with the tax increase that you've approved for this year, but for what are you going to do for '21, '22? What is your strategy? When I hear comments from board members about kicking the can down the street for expenses, that is a concern for me as a consumer. I'm surprised that more people have not responded. Probably when they get their bills, then it'll hit them because obviously there's a lot of things going on today in everybody's household. A few other items, you know, a comment that was made last night, well, we're replacing smart boards because that's what we've done. We're in year four of year five. Well, this is a different time. You need to be more creative, folks, in your budgeting process. I look forward to talking to some of the board members that are in my region so that I can share my thoughts with you. And again, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. And just please know that so much went in to those meetings. I, I think you're probably aware of that just from watching last week and tuning in to some of our conversations about that. So thank you. But we, we. Very much so. And, and we are all over it.
I think, and also that it might not have come out in the meetings that you, that you were watching, but this district actually has a seven-year rolling budget. So we know not what next year is going to look like, but we know what the next seven years are going to look like. We have, it's very, very complex as far as the spending is in the district. We take, you know, every dollar, very, and I, I don't think, I don't think when, when it was talking about the smart boards, it probably didn't come across as what we're talking about. But we're on a technology cycle program. So what we're, what we try to do is spend so much a year because of, and that, again, falls into what you commented about kicking the can down the road. So it's like if we, if we. So it's like if we, and smart boards is a new technology. This stuff was just introduced into classrooms, you know, a few years ago, five, eight years maybe is when the first smart boards came out. So we're always constantly incorporating new technologies as it works its way into, from a curriculum standpoint. So the whole point is, is that we have so much we spend per year, so we keep bringing technology. Because if we don't, that's what happens is that, that's one of the things that could kick down the road. And we end up in a situation where now we have a bigger problem. And I share your concern as far as what next year is going to look like. I was very vocal last week about that as well, or whatever week it was, everything, was it last week? Two weeks ago. So yes, you're 100% right that we have very, the district, or many districts are going to have very rough, tough times ahead of them. And what I was saying at the budget meeting when we voted on it is that we keep getting forced to push this onto the taxpayers. And I was just not comfortable last time, this recent time, approving a budget because there's, and there's going to be more mandates, unfunded mandates that are going to come out of Pennsylvania with this pandemic or whatever we want to call what August and September is going to look like, that we're going to be required to do in the schools if we open or we hold schools, hold school, bring the kids to the classes. So there's, we don't know. And it's going, and it potentially is going to be very expensive. And sure. You have to go to the microphone. Sorry.
So Springfield has always been reasonable with their taxes. I've been here since 1996. My wife wanted my kids to go to St. Eleanor's, but they didn't have room in kindergarten. So for all the wrong reasons, my kids ended up at Springfield and they greatly benefit from that. And this is a great school district. But again, my concern is moving into next year, look at what you're doing every day. Look at the expenses that you have every day and manage them. You have over 300 extracurricular activities that people are getting paid for. If you saved 1% on those, what would it do? I'm spitballing, okay? But I'll share some of my ideas with somebody in region, excuse me, whatever, two? Two, thank you.
We've got one more hand raised in the public comment.
Can we go back and do that? Okay, all right, go ahead.
Mary, your mic is live. Please give us your name and address and your comment, please.
Minister Court in Collegeville. My comment is, I'm not exactly sure what the green stage entails, but is there any chance that school just goes back to normal? I did write each of you a letter regarding my concerns, so I won't reiterate them all here. But as I stated, this virus, it was going on long before any precautions were taken. And there was not one outbreak in one school, daycare, university, in the entire country. And I think these measures that you're talking about are going to harm our children's education and mental state way more than this virus ever could. It's already stolen so much from our children that is there any way that we just go back to normal without these measures? I also read from another state that they won't implement these social distancing guidelines because they clash with the security issues, like the stuff you have in place for school shootings. So with all this, I'm just fearful that the schools are just going to be too concerned about implementing these safety measures and actually teaching, and our children are going to continue not to learn anything. I have three children and I can say that they didn't learn anything through those online stuff. One, I had one teacher that was on top of things. I had one teacher that I barely heard from. And they need traditional school. Is there any chance that that happens?
Mary, I responded to your email. It was a very well-thought-out email. And again, we, as a school district, are required to follow certain things that are set forward by the state, you know, PDE and the government. Depending on what is mandated versus not, will then drive what we can and cannot do if and when we start school in August. If that makes sense.
I was just going to say that if it's not mandated, if they're just requirements, can you just not follow them and go to school? I just don't understand why they need to be followed when this hasn't posed a risk. And if you kept the kids apart, they're just going to be together right after school anyway, like they are all summer long already. It just seems like such drastic measures that are really going to hurt this generation. They're setting them up for failure. These are impressionable years, especially in the elementary school age. I mean, my daughter's entering kindergarten and that's supposed to be about hugs and play. If she's being taught, she has a great personality right now, but if she's being taught not to hug or not to touch somebody or she can't be friends, I don't even know what her future is going to be like.
Just to clarify, 1.8-
Hold on one second. Hold on one second. Let's try to complete public comment instead of doing it as a Q and A. I just prefer we, we're pretty good with that. But in an answer to the question, it's very simple. We're licensed by the Department of Education. Therefore, they can very quickly penalize a school entity if they're not adhering to directives of the governor's office. So while, while we'd like to believe that we have a lot of flexibility, at the end of the day, if we're deviating from an order, whether we like that order or not, there is oversight and there's punitive measures that can be taken. So we recognize what she's saying, but we have to recognize what else is coming from Harrisburg.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Okay, do we have any more hands raised at all?
No more hands raised at this time.
Okay, then it would appear that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, meeting adjourned.